Oh, there you are. How y'all doing today?
Good. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting today. We've got a content bridge scheduled today. And first on that is we are fortunate enough to have Leanne and Cory Schoonover and Adams. Cory Schoonover with us today from the Fairfield County Dog and Adoption Shelter, and also from the Humane Society. And rumor has it, you two are getting along these days, so I don't know. Not in a negative way, I didn't. But appreciate y'all being with us today and look forward to hearing your presentation. Do you have a sense on your timeline?
How long it's gonna take?
Yep.
It depends on how Leanne talks. I don't talk a lot.
Okay.
Can talk a lot, but I'll keep it to the minimum.
If you would.
Listen to.
We try to, try to keep these things around 50, if you would.
Leanne Adams. Um, I am a dog warden down here in Fairfield County. I, Cory and I have worked together on some things here recently, and we just kinda wanna go over some of the things that we have worked on. So one of the few things that we're doing is we're gonna try to improve our partnership. That way there, we can work together on different things, maybe host some community events together, anything to strengthen our bond, for the community mostly. We're all here for the dogs and the animals, so that's kinda what we want to focus on. Increase communication. We wanna make sure that we're communicating well with each other. We know what's going on. If there's issues that arise, we communicate and work on that together. And we, they're not getting pushed off onto a third party. Everybody is good to go. We also have implemented a new after-hours process. There has been some confusion with law enforcement about who to call and when. So we're working to tighten that up and get law enforcement to know when they need to call us, who they need to call, and who's gonna respond type situation, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest thing for everyone here in the room, and I've been the director of the Humane Society for 13 years, and I still, on a daily basis, run across someone even that I've known for years that doesn't realize we're not a county agency, or doesn't realize what we do versus what the dog shelter does. So the biggest piece for me on here is the after-hours process. Law enforcement gets a call at 10:00 PM with an animal situation. They have no idea even who they're calling. So how do we expect the general public to know who they're supposed to call? So the document that we spent quite a bit of time creating and making sure it was lawyer-proof and everything as well, I think was the most important piece because we, you know, you made the comment like we're getting along. Like, you'd wake up in the morning and then some after-hour situation happened, and then we're frustrated at each other, like, well, why did, why did we go? Or why did he go? So I think a little bit, just clarification for us as well. A lot of people don't understand there are multiple different sections of code for laws on animals. Leanne's department handles one section or a couple sections of those, and then the Humane Society and our humane officers handle a totally different section. So that, that's the biggest piece that I wanted to touch on, for sure.
And for that prime example last night, Jared calls me about a loose dog that's been out there for several days. He tells me he called the Humane Society first because the dog hadn't been fed or watered for, since it's been loose. But he called me, it's loose, it's my job to just go get it when it's loose. So thankfully Dave told him to give me a call and we had it taken care of, so. So this is just specifics of the dog shelter. Just some of the things that we've done so far this year. We've got more on the horizon. Some events that we have attended was the JFS Family Fun Fest, as well as the Cops and Kids, which was a few weeks ago. One of our big things that we do on social media, because everybody loves social media, is pup dates. So we like to post key photos of the dogs that are available, and we also like to get feedback from the community. So for people who have adopted these dogs, we love to hear how it's going. So I constantly come in and email us from dogs that have been adopted with, with pup dates and how they're doing and photos. So we love to get those posted out onto social media and whether anybody can see how the dogs are doing. One of the major changes that you'll notice if you ever stop by is we've removed the carpeting and installed new flooring in the building. I don't know if you noticed, but dog carpeting in a dog, it's probably in a dog shelter is not ideal. So wasn't smelling too pretty, so we got rid of that. Now it smells much better and is much fresher. That also gives us more ability to bring the dogs up in the lobby with us and get to know them more personally, their personalities a little bit better, to get them better homes. One thing that we're gonna do in the future, we will be attending the Community Day of Action on June 16th. So if you wanna come out and see us, we'll be out there having some fun. We'll have a dog with us. And one of the things I'm looking forward to most this year is we're gonna implement new shelter uniform policy. We're all gonna match, we'll be easily identified to anybody that comes in, visits us and knows who we are. Updates the Humane Society for us?
Just specifically for the commissioners, our stray cat trap neuter release program that you guys have helped support over the last couple of years. I haven't been in since, it's been sometime last year. So just as an update, we, that program, we ended up fixing over 800 stray feral cats in, in and around Fairfield County last year. We're on pace to do the same amount this year. This is a huge time of year for us. You know, not only we have plenty of dogs and puppies available for adoption, but it's kitten season, so we are getting bombarded with people calling or bringing in a box of kittens. I think the biggest thing for the, for the public is if you find a neonatal kitten or any neonatal animal at all, it's, it's kit season, it's kit season, it's puppy season, it's baby birth season, just leave those things alone. I give, it's very rare that a kitten without its eyes open made it to the middle of your sidewalk. So mom was probably interrupted when you were coming out the front door. Their success rate at survival is best with them. Us bottle-feeding kittens that two days old, three days old, without any antibodies from the mom, that's almost a death sentence for them. And it's mentally really hard on my staff or even our kitten contractors. So the best thing I can tell you is make sure that you're leaving that alone, you know, off in the distance. I had someone from the Board of Elections call the other day because there was a fawn laying out near the building, and they were texting and calling. I said, hey, just leave that be because mom has decided that's a safe place and she doesn't want you bothering it. So give you a couple ideas of things to look for, and then leave it be. So same idea with kittens. Don't bring me a kitten with an umbilical cord on it because mom was probably in the middle of moving it, and we need to let that happen.
That's all I got. Just two pups that are looking for homes if you're interested. The Lila is the round one in discretion because the one laying on the bed.
Can we even have time for a question and answer that?
Yeah.
I do have a question if I might, and I, I know it's a difficult subject for a number of people. Recently, a Lancaster police officer was put in an impossible situation. From what I could tell from the body cam footage, that situation arose in the moment, happened very quickly. Decision needed to be made. But I wondered if either of your agencies were at all involved in the aftermath
Yes.
of that situation.
I was.
And what was your role in the aftermath?
So anytime there's something like that, some criminal citation issued, as well as some designations, it is going through the courts right now. So that will make that final determination on the remaining life on.
I know, that was gonna be my next question.
I can talk dead live.
I, I was hopeful that, however, I don't know how that'll all turn out, but I was hopeful that, that the second.
I can talk dead live, it is, what I was hoping it was.
And Humane Society, did you have a role in the aftermath of that? Or was that just the dog shelter?
So our aftermath was more of me answering questions on, was that excessive force towards the dog? You know, is that, is that a humane case? But, I mean, law enforcement is in a, in a lot different situation. Handling those things at the moment. You know, it's different. I watched the body cam footage, I gave my opinion and it dawned on me, so.
I, I appreciate the work you all do every day. Like my colleagues say, I'm a dog owner, a dog lover. I got a couple labs. One which got from the Humane Society. You remember, may remember Goldie, as you called her back in the day. Rossi now, that, she's 15 and she's struggling. So we're getting to that point where sure we'll be faced with the difficult process. But appreciate you folks very much. Commissioner Levis, see any questions?
So my, my question falls around dangerous animals, dangerous dogs. Are you, are you, are you involved in many cases where that, that's problematic?
This is.
In the sense that we see it difficult here.
So state, state law did change back in 2012 based on a dog's actions. So Ohio did have specific legislation prior to that, but they did change those laws in 2012. So there are dangerous dog and vicious dog and nuisance dogs. It is based on the dog's actions. So for example, the LPD incident where the dogs did bite somebody, that dog was designated as a dangerous dog. He has, I don't reveal for that, so the courts will ultimately decide whether that designation sticks or if it gets dismissed. There are stricter requirements for dangerous dogs. They have to have a special registration, special confinement signage. Then they have to notify us if something happens. But it is specific to the dog, from the dog's action. So I have designated Yorkies and Chihuahuas dangerous for many people because any dog that causes injury is dangerous by law.
Can I follow up on that? So we handle, you know, we have dogs coming and they get calls too. So people wanting to surrender their animals, their, you know, dogs specifically. And people get frustrated with us, so. And, and the reason I'm bringing it up is we were getting a lot of it lately, behavior issues. So the last couple of years during COVID, adoptions skyrocketed. People got dogs when they were home, and then they go back to work, they didn't do anything with the dogs, they didn't socialize the dogs, whatever. So then behavior issue turns into possible bites, whether it's, so if it's a family member. Correct me if I'm wrong, you guys generally don't handle bites on family members in the same house, right?
Depending.
Okay. So what, but what we're seeing a lot of is, hey, I don't wanna deal with this dog. This dog keeps biting my kids or biting my own family member. Tries to attack people that come over. We can't adopt that out. We can't correct that behavior that hasn't been addressed for months or years or whatever. And we also deal with situations where maybe we're not told that information when a dog comes in. So we have to, we have the tough job of evaluating those situations with either no information or very little information when we just really ask that, you know, when you have a dog and, and you're in that situation, you gotta realize you need to do a little bit of adulting. It's not something, a dangerous dog or someone that's willing to bite your own kid or your own family member or spouse or any relative that comes over. Like, like something needs to be handled by you for that, not, hey, we're gonna surrender it to the dog shelter or the Humane Society.
And the reason I bring this up, I, I witnessed this firsthand. I was a paramedic, fire chief. Witnessed dog attacks, especially on young children. And sometimes the reluctance of the dog owner to take the right action because if they've done it once, they're definitely gonna do it again.
Behavioral euthanasia is a hard topic for a lot of the society. They would rather push their problems off onto somebody else. The dog doesn't like kids, so I wanna find a home that doesn't have kids. In a perfect world, that's great, but we all know that on a daily basis, you know, somebody's gonna come in contact with a kid. So it doesn't make it safe to put that dog in a different home. Some dogs it may be fine for, but not every dog. But behavioral euthanasia is a very sore subject with a lot of people. I think the community is coming around to it more over the years, but it is something that shelters specifically have struggled with to explain to people that we can't adopt the dog out because, you know, it bit your child in the face, or it bit your finger off, or whatever. You know, they, they wanna blame the dog, well, it was an accident. But what happens if it happens again? You know, if it bites an adult, what happens if it severely injures a child next time because the child touched its ball? So it's.
Commissioner Fix, questions?
So I'm a, I'm a big fan of both groups. I've adopted two dogs from our dog shelter, both half-people. Both are the sweetest dogs I've ever owned and can be more blessed with them. You all, I think, have seen the videos, so I need the labor, but the more we can do to, you know, adopt these dogs, both cats and fish and whatever else we got, the better we are. How many dogs do you have in your shelter right now?
Uh, shelter, we're sitting at 40. 42.
You have some that are out in foster care as well?
I've got a couple that are out on medical treatment for heartworm. And then I've got two that are in foster to get out of the shelter early this night.
How many dogs do you?
We have roughly 60 dogs and puppies and another 60 to 80 cats and kittens.
A lot.
It's a lot.
You have thirty dogs. All right, thanks.
Folks, we appreciate you being with us this morning. And Leanne, we congratulate you on your, the recent formalization of your status. I know you were interim dog warden, and now it's just, you're just plain old dog warden. Yeah, well, we appreciate your willingness to serve. And it's encouraging for we commissioners to have you all together. Not that you haven't been historically, but to have you all together cooperating in the way you seem to be now is encouraging to us, and we appreciate it very much. Anyway, thanks Cory for being with us today. The next section of our agenda is public comment. Just a programming note on that. We'll certainly have public comment today, we'll have it at our next meeting, but I wanted to alert folks the fact that on June 27th, we will not have public comment. That's our last meeting going into the July 4th holiday, which we won't be meeting on July 4th, of course. But that meeting historically gets pretty racked and stacked with people wanting to get their things in and get things done before the commissioners disappear for a week or two. So I just wanna kinda keep that meeting as tight as possible right now to allow for the business that needs to be done at that time. So I'm just letting folks know that. If there are folks who would like to address us today, if you would please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute guideline, which we would appreciate your courtesy on. We would also ask that any comments you make be directed to the commissioners as opposed to other people who are in attendance at this meeting.
Hello, my name is Ray Steeman, 2444 West Point Road, Lancaster, Ohio. I just wanted to make a couple comments before I pray. The older I become, you begin to wonder whether anything new can happen, and it happens every day. So with that in mind, I have turned my life closer to the Lord simply because of my belief that the Lord is in charge of everything. He knows everything that you people are doing and thinking. That's hard for people to understand. It's hard for me to fully understand as a person. God knows each one of us personally what we're doing. So with that in mind, I wanted to turn to prayer. Lord, you know the things that are happening in the world. Nothing surprises you because we can look at the end of the book and find out what the end results will be. So Lord, we pray that we might be on your team telling people about the Son you sent into the world to die for our sins and also that we can be forgiven and have that home in heaven that the Bible tells about. So Lord, we pray for each and every one in this room. Guide and direct us throughout this day. Help us to grow closer to you in faith and in our walk in this life. And Lord, I thank you and praise you for each one in this room for their interest in what the government is doing and how we need to handle this situation. It's tough to know the answers, but you know the answer, Lord. So we turn to you and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else would like to address the commissioner at this time? We thank you all for coming.
Hey, how you doing? Anything on legal?
Actually, Commissioner, there are a few things today. I will note there are two resolutions regarding levies for the board today. One is the Meals on Fields levy. Our office assisted with the preparation of that resolution necessity. Thanks to Meals on Fields for all the help on that, getting us to the required probation so the commissioners can pass this resolution. Once you all pass it, it'll go to the office, the evaluation, come back to you. Ask people to be there to do what's in to proceed without the 20th. What's it use with, use mine for all this night? The other levy, the commissioners have considerations for the library district. That's a little different in the sense that the only action this board's taking is to click on the ballot. The library districts already passed the resolution necessity. They've already obtained evaluation. They've already passed the resolution to proceed. The rest of the commission proceed is to run through all to put on the ballot except for the 50%. Some ways you guys could do this. Previously, you passed the resolution necessity, the resolution proceed, but you don't need that today because they're not proceeding up that section. So I just wanted to alert the commissioners to that. And I wanna thank the library district for putting all the information. It was super helpful and this paid passage of both resolutions.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your work on that. I, I think we'll probably have a little more discussion about those items under resolutions. You were correct to answer my question and to give that information now. I don't want you to think, was I out of luck? No, you're, you're right there, right where you're supposed to be. Appreciate it. Let's go to administration update.
Okay, we can review rescue plan update on the 30.6 received as the first and second tranche. 24.5 has been appropriated, 13.9 expanded, 4.3 encumbered. And then today, there is a resolution on speaking to the infrastructure project at the airport. I don't know if Tony, John, Bart, or Jeff wanna speak to that in more detail?
So contracts be signed, all excavating that contract. Number of invoices that'll be paid. Big thing is trying to get them to the. I don't think it's gonna impact anything at the airport.
You wanna give a little bit of pressure on the project?
Yeah. So, so one of the hangars that you is the key hangers, well, that's right where their lift station is for the sewer. So we're moving that out front of the terminal. And then we're also running a sewer line down to sewer those four personal hangers, and then we're priming water to them. So they'll all have water and sewer. Plus, we have taps, the tap pays in this project, two, two taps for those and for some additional hangers, as well as the slot building, those are all in.
So the, the end user, when this project is complete, the end user will, will all be internal, if you will. In other words, the airport, sheriff's office, it's all internal to the airport. Does any, does anything about this project have any external?
I think there could be service across to the southern side of Airport Drive if it's ever developed. We don't own that property.
That's the old firing range that they'd have to clean up. The line's been there already, so they can service it anywhere. But nothing with this project is outside of the airport.
Not to get too far off the subject or whatever, but old firing range? I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
Um, it's a, it's a piece of property just south of the airport that was a gun club.
Oh, okay.
Currently owned by Kirk Bright Landscaping. They do have some plans to remediate and develop, and actually I think a part is for sale right now. So, you know, we always watch and support any development out there.
Fairfield County Land Bank currently is working with them on evaluation and possible remediations with lead issues with a former gun club. Sure. Wanna stay on this subject just for a minute, if I could, see if Commissioner Levis, he has questions or comments on this water and sewer project at the airport.
So in this day and age, I'm shocked to see a didn't come in lower than engineers' projection. Pretty big number, actually.
Yeah. We, I think there are a couple things in that. Here, I want to tell me. And it. All excavating for local company.
Commissioner Fix, anything on this issue?
No, thank you.
Please continue with the administration update.
Thank you to John, Tony, and Bart, Jeff for moving that project forward. I appreciate that. Next week, June 13th, will be one of our evening meetings, and it will be held at Amanda Clear Creek Schools at 7:00 PM. And school folks have shared with us that people should enter through door K on the left side of the building. So those that are not familiar with the school there, door K will be the entrance. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet contains a list of administrative approvals, and there are 22 resolutions for the voting meeting today. Two that we've already mentioned are the levy, the resolutions of necessity for both the library and for the senior services levy there. We also have a resolution authorizing the renewal of a lease for the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the BMB that's located at the One Stop at Liberty Center. We also have a resolution to approve loan documents for an RLF project, wellness within chiropractic. Rick, you wanna speak to that one?
Well, yeah, this is a this was a few weeks ago, but it's a woman who went back to the area. She's a chiropractor elsewhere and wanted to come back to Lancaster and start her own practice. So it's two of our areas, which is female owned businesses and healthcare. A nice addition. It's actually gonna be located in a new office park. Part Columbus by Edie Green.
Wonderful, thank you. We also have a resolution for installation of access control at the Fairfield Center. So John and his team have continued to work through some projects there. This will be kind of one of the, the last items that you're checking off the list, right?
Getting there. But yeah, it's 22 access control devices from Fairfield Center to make it easier to go throughout the queue.
And thank you, John, and your team for all your work you're doing up there. Moving on to budget review, Bart?
We.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's pause for just a second on highlights of resolutions and.
And I understand we may have a representative from the library with us today.
Becky Shade.
Becky, how are you today?
Thank you. How are you?
I'm good. You heard the report there from the prosecutor's office expressing their appreciation for your cooperation and work on this. I just wondered if you wanted to perhaps take a moment to touch on the levy that you're asking for and comment on that.
Sure, I would love to. Thank you for that opportunity. My name is Becky Shade. I'm the director of the Fairfield County District Library. The levy that we've put before you today is a replacement of our half mil levy that was last replaced in 2013. It was renewed in 2018. We are asking for voters to consider a 10-year term for this levy. Because it is a replacement, there is a difference in estimated revenue for that levy. Currently, our .5 mil levy is $11.19 per $100,000 valuation. A replacement, if approved, would be $17.50 per $100,000 valuation for property owners in Fairfield County Library District. This would allow the library to do a few things. It would, if approved, give us approximately $500,000 more annually in our local levy revenue. Our other large portion of our budget is made up from the Public Library Fund through the state of Ohio. That part of our funds is about 2/3 of the library budget, our local levy about 1/3, and then 2% or 3% in things like fines and collections, copy or money, donations, that kind of thing. With those funds, we are looking to do a few things. First, we have some continued building maintenance issues that need to be addressed. Currently, our elevator is out of service. We had a hydraulic cylinder crack in our elevator, which is, I understand, a large project. It is original to our 1979 building and we are in the process of getting that repaired. It is a long process and quite expensive, of course. And we have some other large maintenance needs, chiller replacement, for example, that we are looking to start competitive bid with. We are starting soon a limestone facade project. Our limestone on the front of our building, unfortunately, is reaching its end of life. It has not had any moisture issues yet leaking in that we're aware of, but it is crumbling visibly. So we do need to do our due diligence and take care of that. As anyone who has done any construction project knows, the cost of those has risen greatly. In addition to continued building maintenance, we would like to use those additional funds from that replacement to expand services, which is our primary mission in Fairfield County, to serve our community through library service. What that could look like is... So, for example, currently at Remain Library, we're open three nights a week. Most communities of our size would have library service four nights a week. We unfortunately don't have the staff available to support that and have not been able to do that since budget cuts in 2008. It would be my desire to begin that again with a little bit of additional funding. I think we would be able to do that. Other things we're looking at to do with those funds would be to... We currently have whole pickup lockers at three of our locations. These are services where a customer can request items, have them checked out, pick them up 24 hours a day with their library card. Very convenient and easy, a great way to expand services without expanding hours. And we have them about half of our locations. We'd love to be able to expand those to all of our locations. So some of those kinds of things is what we're looking at for that replacement levy. Are there questions I could answer for you?
Yeah, I just have a question. My colleagues may or may not... I'm just sitting here thinking about the first time I turned a computer on and got to the internet. Thinking it was '94 or '95, I'm not sure the exact year. But I remember thinking in that moment, oh my gosh, libraries are dead. So in that context, I'm just curious who your consumers or clients are now in today's library?
Absolutely. I think it really is across the board. It is an organization that serves all levels of society. We do, we provide, of course, materials for people. That's kind of a traditional thing, access to computers. We do a lot of programming, which... So from things like Storytime for young kids, building early literacy, but also programs for teens to keep them engaged and involved in positive activities and even programs for adults. We have a program coming up soon on first-time homebuyership. So education, but also interesting things. And of course, computer users are still part of our service, but I will say, as more and more people get devices at home or have access to internet in other ways, I think it's important to still have access for people that don't have that in their homes, but it is not as many people as it used to be for us. We have a large collection of physical materials, of course, but we also have a large collection of digital materials. And people use both kind of interchangeably in a lot of cases. The pandemic did increase the number of digital resources that people are using, but we still circulate about 80% of our materials are tangible, physical items. So there still is a large need for that in our community. The other thing that we provide is a community space. So meeting rooms, study rooms, that kind of thing, a place where people can collaborate and work and with no expectation of paying, that kind of thing. So our desire is to be that community hub that provides a lot of different types of services for different types of people. So it's hard for me to identify one type of person that uses the library because it really does run the gamut, I think. But of course, as a librarian, you know, people... What are you going to do when the library closes? And it's, well, you know, we actually are quite busy. We have a line of people waiting to get in every single day. You know, we have about 3,000 people who visit us weekly. So at this point, who knows what the future will hold? But at this point, I think we have positioned ourselves as a community center that offers a lot. If you're just a repository for books, I agree, your time is numbered. But if you expand to all these other types of services, I think you're positioning yourself well to be able to serve your community into the future.
That 3,000 numbers, fantastic and surprising to me.
It is, it is.
Commissioner Levis, questions or comments for the library?
Thank you. You know, first thing you addressed was how you could utilize that additional $500,000. And I can see that need. You know, one of the programs that's going on right now is through United Way, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library.
Yes.
And listening to the governor and the first lady talk about how far we lag behind as a society for our reading abilities. So what you're going is very important. But also, if you could comment on what kind of interaction you may have with that program?
Absolutely. So I sit on the United Way Board and I am a huge supporter of the Dolly's Imagination Library, both personally and professionally. I was a children's librarian before I became a library director and I personally believe the most important thing a library does is build early literacy skills in young minds. We do lots of important things, but if I had to pick one, that would be it. We promote that program, fill out applications, show people how to do it, turn them into United Way. We've partnered on a variety of different programs to get more people into the library, get people signed up for that program because the research shows having a home library is going to be a huge, maybe a huge difference in that child's life, in their school career, in their... When they join the workforce, it all starts there. So we do interact with that program very positively. And I have to give United Way a huge amount of credit. They started that program in Fairfield County years and years ago. Currently, there is funding available at the state level, which is amazing. It allows them to expand that program to more children, but they saw the importance of it many, many years ago before Mike Dwyane was in office and Fran was pushing that program. It's amazing and I'm so proud to be a small part of it.
So the state provides about 50% funding and of course, the balance of that needs to be raised locally. So again, I'm a big proponent of this. You know, the governor and the first lady talks about, you know, up to the age five, 80% of the brain is already formed. And so it's pretty important we get these young people involved and thank you for your cooperation on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fix, questions or comments on the library issue?
So just a comment that I'm grateful for the work that you and your team do. Like Commissioner Davis, you know, 20, 30 years ago, as having grown up going to libraries, you know, all through grade school, high school, and college, wondered what was going to happen. The library I go to is the Pickington Public Library and I am consistently amazed at the depth and breadth of things that they're now doing that 20 years ago would not have ever been considered and as a result are more viable perhaps than they've ever been. So it sounds like you're on that same path and certainly appreciate your willingness to think outside the traditional box of what a library should be. So wish you all the success in the world with the levy and I look forward to your success with that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you being with us today. Appreciate your time. Just programming note, we look forward to seeing you again on June 20th, when we'll dive a little deeper into what's going on at the library today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we both have with us today Anna Tobin and looks like maybe your whole board, but maybe somebody couldn't be here today. I'm not sure.
Our board members, Donna Fox, Lauren Karen Sander, and Linda McDonald is our Director of Aging Services and we have our Director of Administration, Sarah Armit.
And Cory is with you today, too. I mean, he's kind of with us, but he's kind of with you, another one of your board members. Just wondered if you wanted an opportunity to touch on the request for the levy. I don't know if folks completely understand this or not, but these two levies that we're talking about today are a little different in kind. The Meals on Wheels levy is actually a county levy, if you will. We take the recommendations from your board as to what to do with that levy incredibly seriously. So, but I wondered if you wanted an opportunity to just touch on that and what you're up to.
Can you hear me okay if I stand here?
We have some online participants whose ability to hear is compromised if it's not said loudly into the microphone.
That was the biggest challenge of the day.
Well, would have been worse last week.
I hear it's crowded. Well, thank you for having us today. My name is Anna Tobin. I'm the executive director at Meals on Wheels of Fairfield County. We're celebrating our 50th year of service to the community this year. So we're incredibly proud of that. And in that time, I've been doing a lot of research of how this all started and it was very much a grassroots effort. Donna Dagger and Dorothy LaSar and Sister Lucille Stewart kind of were the grassroots beginning of preparing food and getting it out to seniors. So over the course of time, of course, we kind of, you know, grew and expanded. The need outpaced the funding, the donations, the United Way support that was all in place. And the senior services levy was placed on the ballot in 2004. On that ballot, the services under the levy funding included home-delivered meals, congregate meals, minor home repairs, caregiver support, and a variety of supportive services to improve the quality of life for older adults and help them remain living independently in their homes. That same mission, that same purpose continues today at a much expanded level. We've grown and we've provided more seniors with services over the years that followed that first levy. So again, in 2008, the levy was renewed at the .5 mil. 2013, it was renewed at the 5 mil. And in 2018, we went back on the ballot with the 5 mil renewal with a .3 increase. That funding then supported our services and then the pandemic hit. And so coming back on the ballot this next time, we are doing a full replacement of our .8 mil levy to again, support our services for the ever-increasing senior population and to accommodate for the incredible inflation that has hit our organization in food costs, up 47%. You know your grocery bills at home, how they've gone up? But when you're feeding over 1,000 people every day, that really has hit us hard. Staffing, labor costs, you all know. You can't hire somebody in at 8:35 an hour anymore, which was our, I think we were at 9:00, hiring in people at $9 at the beginning of the pandemic. We're now up to $14 an hour to get people to come in the door and interview with us. Fleet expense up 33%. Gas, repairs, fuel, oil, and that type of thing. All these costs play into the fact that additional funding is needed to continue to provide services to seniors when they need services and not to be placed on a waiting list. If we were to go back on the levy with a strict renewal of our levy at this point, we would have to institute a waiting list for services beginning in 2023, this year. So in order to continue to provide those services for seniors at a time when they need it most, we will be doing a full replacement levy. So I hope I touched upon our need for the levy and I am open to any questions you may have.
And just a question out of curiosity. I apologize for not recalling, but you were last on the ballot in 18, right?
Correct.
And do you recall the result? I mean, I know you won, but the spread between those who favored the levy and those voted against it in 2018?
I believe we were at 67% approval rate.
That's... I know it's widely supported and particularly by the demographic that you serve and have experience with friends and family members who depended heavily on your service when they were, you know, in that situation. So appreciate your board and your folks that are doing that work. And I know the recipients of that service really consider it a lifeline in many ways. So thank you for that. I'll see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Mr. Levis?
I don't have any questions because, you know, I'm a big supporter of everything you guys do. Every time I see a meal, it's always truck. I appreciate just what's being accomplished. So, and I think it goes beyond the meals. I think it goes just, you know, I've done ride-alongs. They want to see that delivery person. They want to talk to that person because many of them don't have that opportunity. So you provide a lot of benefit for the older folks here in Fairfield County. Keep up the work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fix, questions or comments?
God bless you and your team for what you're doing. It's really needed and appreciated and also wish you great success with the levy.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today and thank you for supporting the Meals on Wheels Senior Services Levy. Thank you.
Don't want to intentionally exclude board members who are with Meals on Wheels today, but if there are things that are on your mind that you would like to share with the commission, I would certainly want to give you an opportunity to do that. Cory, anything?
I would just say I had the opportunity to serve on the levy committee with all of the folks that are here today as well. I would assure you that a great deal of thought and discussion and analysis went into coming up with this often for the levy. We looked at the budget currently and for the next five years, what we need. We want to continue those services and to offer a little bit of room to expand services. Anna and her team have some great ideas for expanding services. They're very much in demand with this population. So we did a great deal of research that went into it. Definitely feel like this is the best option.
Thank you.
Mr. President? No.
I feel what Cory just said. Hardest thing would be in our budget. We're pretty behind. I don't know what the next five years is. Pretty hard for us to plan and drive yourselves. That's what's going to happen. But at the end of the day, we'll be five years. And add the services to the community we serve. This is that last anyone's had to come back and don't have enough funding three, four years down. But there's not something. This gives us a cushion at the end of the five years of about three months I needed budgeting for. So I think we'll keep going very hard on that.
Appreciate your support. Well, on behalf of the commissioners, we thank all the board members, including Donna Foxmore. It's good to see you again for your service and work on this. And then we'll continue with the agenda with the budget review. Bart, what do you got?
This commissioner, the dashboard that everybody's looking at here, collaboration from the commissioners, office staff, the commissioners and the county administrator Corle, as we're working to, working to get a resolve of the financial dashboards that will be used to help us monitor our financial environment. This is just a small snapshot of the thousands of data points developed to review the actuals as well as the forecast and projections. The goal is to provide the leaders with information that allows them to make educated financial decisions based upon historical, current and projected financial data. If you look at that first data set there, the current budget or revised budget, as we call it, represents the current budget for two thousand and twenty-three. It includes the carryover purchase orders from the prior year, changes and adjustments that have been made through May of this year. Year to date actuals represent what has spent to date and the remaining is the estimates from Jan, from June through December of this year, where the forecasted total represents the total estimated forecast for two thousand and twenty-three. You can see that we've also included our forecasted ending balance of cash, which we continue to monitor and adjust as our environment changes. As we move on to the charts, the percent of forecast revenue and expenses chart shows the percent of revenue and expenses to date. So basically showing what we have spent or received to date throughout this year. If you think of those percentages that are showing up there, currently we're at forty-one point seven percent. If there's a straight percentage across the board, basically taking twelve months, dividing things by twelve, giving you percentage, if that was accurate, maybe at forty-one point seven percent, our world doesn't necessarily revolve around that because of the timing of some of our expenses and revenue coming in. But that's just kind of a reference for everybody there.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bart, but you, you're currently using the number forty-one point seven and I'm looking for it.
If you go down, can you go up a little bit there, Bennett? Or sorry, sorry, down. If you look at that annual percent in the notes there, I'm showing through May, it would have been forty-one point seven.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the bars and graphs and stuff and I wasn't finding that number. Thank you.
Um, and as we move on to the budget overview, overview, that shows comparisons between original budget, revised budget, or the current budget, the estimated forecast and the actuals to date to give quick reference there to how we're going to perform through two thousand and twenty-three. We also, we also included a revenue and expense actual percent to date based upon categories. So all that data breaking down into categories, can you move up just a little bit, Bennett? Down, I keep saying the wrong thing. Those are the categories breaking that same data down by category associated with both our revenue and our expenses. I'd also like to state that this information is much more than just a short dashboard. Behind the scenes, this information allows our group to analyze, adjust and forecast changes both in the current financial environment as well as providing historical and future projections. I want to thank the commissioners for their continued support, their professional input and their patience as we came to work through the development of these financial tools.
Bart, appreciate your work on that. And I had a chance to visit briefly this morning and I know that, you know, as we get to the end of June, you'll have another crack at this, so to speak. You know, I'm certainly not hitting any buttons with the May wobble, we'll call it. But we'll, we'll see how that data continues to track, particularly with respect to the, the sales tax revenue. Staying on this subject, I wanted to see if Auditor Brown had questions or comments on, on this subject matter.
I agree that the May variable is not anything to make adjustment for at this point in time. And I would comment that the reason we're tracking slightly ahead is because of property taxes.
Because of what? I'm sorry.
Property taxes. Priming of their collection, very specifically.
All right.
It's probably a good time to say that thirty-two point five million is the unassigned general fund balance. That's something that's usually reported at this time to have it in mind in case there's any problems issued when that question is asked. That's for twelve point twenty-two.
All right, moving on to recognition, County Auditor Dr. Brown applauded Jessica Ferguson, Jennifer Harmon and Bev Anders for completing tech prep training. County Auditor Dr. Brown also shared that at Bloom Township meeting on May twenty-fourth, officials commented on the excellent customer service of the auditor's office, the technical expertise of GIS and how everyone collaborates with one another. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Bernie Fleming, Vicki Tower, Connie Smith and the Master Gardeners, as well as the mowing team with facilities for their terrific work with landscaping at one oh eight North High Street. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Kurt Truax for updating the Board of Election files in record time to support the August election. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
The Regional Planning Commission meeting is today at five thirty at the Record Center. Fairfield Thirty-Three Development Alliance meeting is June seventh at the Fairfield County Workforce Center. Fairfield County Planning Next Staff meeting is June twelfth at two o'clock. Transportation Improvement District meeting is June thirteenth at one P M. Wear Purple June fifteenth to raise awareness and fight against elder abuse. The OSU Extension Gluten Free Eating Class is June twenty-seventh at twelve o'clock and that is at the Keller Market House. Again, the announcement that there will be no public comment at the June twenty-seventh meeting to allow for county business. In correspondence, we have an email from Jennifer Morgan from Regional Planning Commission Board regarding a staff update. A press release from the Board of Commissioners Office, May thirtieth, Columbus T E O names Fairfield County a winner of the Columbus Top Workplaces two thousand and twenty-three Award. A press release from the Fairfield County Workforce Center, May thirtieth, Fairfield County Workforce Center receives national award. A press release from the County Auditor, June first, Auditor's Office employees participate in inaugural Ohio University Women's Leadership Summit. A press release from the County Auditor, June fifth, County Auditor announces new electronic option for the preapproval of legal descriptions. A bulletin from the Fairfield County Safety Council regarding their acceptance of new members, that they are now accepting new members. A congratulatory note from Delaney McElhenne to the Commissioners for receipt of celebration award at the Board of Developmental Disabilities event. A thank you letter from the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging to Commissioner Levy for attending and presenting at their annual recognition ceremony. A letter from the Ohio Ecological Food and Farm Association regarding the county's land use plan. A letter of support for annual budget funds for the Fairfield County Workforce Center from Ohio University, Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development and Hocking College to Senators Huffman and Dolan. Ohio Division of Liquor Control new liquor permit. This was submitted back to the Division of Liquor Control with a signature and this is for location in Pickerington. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown, County Auditor, June first, subjects general fund, unassigned fund balance and general fund revenues, video training tools, new electronic process for preapprovals of legal descriptions, final board of revision hearings, DDL strategic planning and staffing update. The Fairfield County Engineers Office two thousand and twenty-two annual report is included. A bulletin from the Visit Fairfield County Federal Emergency Management Agency letter dated May thirtieth regarding flood insurance rate map and letters and emails from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all the more, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Rochelle. Under whole business, I just have a couple of things to touch on. This past week, had a chance to do a Commissioner connection video with Stephanie Taylor out at the Current Habitat Home. And Stephanie, I told you I would let you know when that's going live. That's going live at the end of this meeting. Given the views, I think there's been a leak. We're off to
Swears there's
We're off to a, we're off, we're off to a running start on views. Anyway, you, you're, you're free to distribute the last version that I sent you on that in any, in all ways you deem appropriate. And I appreciate you doing that with me. I enjoyed it and appreciate the work that you and Habitat for Humanity of Southeast Ohio are doing in our county and others. Also, just touching on, had the chance to go to the Farm Bureau meeting, I think it was this past Thursday or Friday. It wasn't? Anybody?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday. And I thought it was a robust discussion of issues that are facing the farming community and the ways that the Farm Bureau either is or isn't trying to respond to some of those issues. So
On Thursday.
Whatever day it was, it was. I'm not going to change it now. But anyway, that's all I have under whole business. Commissioner Levy under whole business.
I don't have much other than looking forward to state getting their budget finalized and hopefully our request during that. I was able to be with Senator Dolan and discuss that last week with additionally. So things looking positive. So.
I can't count on the state house law community, if that's what it takes, if that's what it takes. I'll do it. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Fix under whole business.
So just also attended with Commissioners Levy and Davis and Ollie Corle are the Farm Bureau meeting. And I was impressed with Commissioner Davis's presentation on some opportunities that the Farm Bureau might take advantage of with regard to the solar situation. There's some recommendations there that I think made a great deal of sense and saw a lot of folks who are involved in lobbying for the Farm Bureau, taking a lot of notes. So just wanted to express my appreciation to Commissioner Davis for his insights and expertise and willingness to share.
Appreciate you saying that. Thank you. Under new business, I do not have any. Commissioner Levy?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fix?
No, thank you.
Go down the line here with electors. Jim, anything you would like to share with the commissioners or the public at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, we're in the process of printing bills for second half on taxes. We expect to have those in the mail on June sixteenth.
Sounds very exciting.
It is exciting. Well, we talked about the budget and that's how we get the money in. And so the due date is July twentieth. Then that, things are going well. Thank you.
Sure, I'll see if I might. Is there yet scheduled the next IAC meeting?
I received an email this morning from the county administrator with that very same question. I'm looking at either the eleventh or the eighteenth of July. We'll check people's schedules to see how that works.
I appreciate it. Appreciate you being with us today. Jeremiah, how are you doing?
I'm doing all right.
Yeah, just wanted to give you a chance if you had anything you wanted to share of what's going on with the Engineers Office right now.
Engineers Office is extremely busy. We've talked about it a couple times before, but we've, we've moved into a pretty secure spot, Rick and I have, with the development up around Moss Western and to help provide some needed infrastructure improvements in that area for what's coming. Also, we're, we're moving forward with examining what the picture of countywide stormwater utility may look like. Hopefully the next three, four months we'll have some kind of a picture on that. But it's going to be far. Otherwise, there's still just a dramatic amount of development speculation and things going on out there. That part of it hasn't slowed down a whole lot. So staying busy. And besides that, we're trying to keep up with, with roads and bridges. We're going to replace five bridges this year. So that's a, that's a good number. One place that we struggled a little bit, mowing caught up with us this year. When we started, things weren't growing real well, still kind of cold. And then all of a sudden we got some rain and it grew real well. And now everything's not growing. But we're just about done. So if you, if you hear anything about that, I've got, I've got extra mowers on duty and doing some overtime trying to get that done.
Appreciate, appreciate that. Commissioner Fix may have had an opportunity to touch base with you after the Farm Bureau meeting. One of the questions that came up, I think it was number seventeen, had to do with the ability to get farm equipment through proposed roundabouts. And I just wondered if you had a chance to think about that? I mean, you were probably already thinking about it, but just a chance to comment on that.
Yeah. So Commissioner Fix did reach out to me and we have thought about that. ODOT's Design Manual for Roundabouts, there's, there's a handful of different sizes of roundabouts, but pretty much when you start dealing with, with ODOT's design criteria for the highway system, we're talking about roundabouts that are designed for semi-traffic, farm equipment. And they even take that to the extent that they run a program that has a little box the size of each one of those pieces of equipment, fire trucks and everything, and run those around them to make sure that there's no issues with, with those vehicles being able to, to maneuver through a roundabout. So yes.
I figured you were. Appreciate your work, sir.
Thank you.
And Jeremiah, they were speaking also to some of the signage being of a complicating factor. They are not, not so much just getting them around the roundabout, but where signage might be placed, a larger piece of equipment could be taking out the signage in the process.
Yeah. I, I agree. And I, I wholeheartedly understand where that concern comes from. There's been quite a few roundabouts built out there in various places, especially rural, that aren't on the state system that don't meet those requirements. And, and that's where a lot of that scare is coming from.
Thank you, sir. Lisa, how are you today?
Good.
Good. Just wondered if you had anything you'd like to share.
Well, I'm, I'm fully stuffed now. I'm at two points of training. So that's very exciting news. And so we're just going to proceed with training. And as summer is coming upon us, home sales are starting to spur again and so business is picking back up.
Dr. Brown?
Hi. New training tools for internal employees and for partners who use our system and their video tools. And we are modeling those after the video tools that we used for the public for reassessments. Those interior videos have been updated again with multiple other counties who are now in their triennial or sexennial process. We have a new electronic process for preapproval of legal descriptions and that's being met very well in terms of efficiency ease, in terms of being able to use the simple file process for preapproval of legal descriptions. Participating in strategic planning process for destination downtown. And if anybody has any input for that, it'd be welcome to take that with me this week. We have a new map of the month, which is inspired by the Hunter's Run Conservancy District, which has six sailboats. And if you can find the sailboats, you get a special prize. Have had some staffing updates and you saw my memo where Chris Wagner is moving to Texas. And I'm going to serve as the point of contact for audit for the next couple of months. And for today, I have the certificate of estimated property tax revenue for the levies here with me now. And so you can have them right away. Seems as if I only need one. And the other one was issued with the library, but just in case, in case this particular resolution needed one, it says the exact same thing. But I have the one.
You mean the heading or the certificate?
The certificate number is the same. Yep. And the taxing authority is Fairfield County, as I was listed.
Yeah, but we have very
Thank you for your update. You know, folks may notice a lot of the
Time to do that.
Normally have, just so I understand the process.
I've been through this label update, but I can do it again.
I didn't have the specific time. It's okay. I thought it was like ten days, but I wasn't sure.
Got it.
Yeah.
Folks may notice, like, at all of our meetings, our department heads are here because they're ordered to be.
They love to be.
And they really enjoy it. Elected officials, I just want to mention again how welcome you are to our meetings and it's encouraging to the commissioners when other electants also attend our meetings. We appreciate that very much. And we'll always point forward and give you an opportunity to, to comment and make any information aware to folks that you would like. We appreciate that very much. Is there any other issue, item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission at this time?
If I can just circle back to Jeremiah.
We're running, running out of time.
That's all right. That's all right. I was going to ask you about Coop Path Road. You know, obviously, that is such a highly traveled road, it's going to be closed for a significant time. Do you have order to
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not the best answer or best place, but basically, people are going to have to go on down to Pleasantville and cross there. So you're right, but just to speak on that for just a second, we have two projects going on on Coop Path Road that both require closures. We're trying to accomplish that at the same time, so I think we have to do with one of the closures and not multiple. Doing my best to make it as minimal as possible. Got to replace a bridge, and we got to fix that pavement.
And so I did notice that, and I think it's very wise of you, because the state of Ohio does not do that.
I'm not sure they worry about welding it, but
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you, Commissioner Levesey. Any other issue, item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission at this time? Hearing that, we'll move on to our voting power. Yes, dear.
Praise, if you are able, we must complete these. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which stands on a nation on a clear island, and in the soul of the Constitution of Justice for all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we have the announcements.
Yes, Family, Adult, and Children First Resolution Number 2023-six-six.i was identified late yesterday afternoon as a Job and Family Services Resolution and has been corrected in CRM S system, but is on your agenda still under Family, Adult, and Children First.
Thank you for that correction. Move on to the approval minutes for May thirtieth, 2023.
Summated. Second.
Question? Our role.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero from the Commissioners, Resolution 2023-six-six.a, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of the Fairfield County District Library for replacement of an existing tax levy.
The Commissioners, I move items A, B, and C. Second.
Discussion? Yeah, we did have an opportunity to discuss these specifically in review, and certainly heard from the proponents of the tax issues. Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero.
This point of privilege, if I have to put it to the commissioners voting today to allow these issues to be placed on ballot. The commissioners, either in our professional capacity or personal capacity, will perhaps decide at some point in the future regarding the endorsement process or support for these levies as in place of their passenger fare. Today's matter is more of a, I don't want to call it a formality, but a process by which issues are valid.
Please proceed.
From the Court of Common, please, Resolution 2023-six-six.d, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Community Corrections Grant Agreement with ODRC for state fiscal years 2023 and 2020.
Summated. Second.
Scott. This is a two-year grant that they're receiving, seven hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Very happy to receive.
Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023-six-six.e, a resolution to approve loan documents to fund wellness within chiropractic LLC as a Fairfield County revolving loan project.
Summated.
Second.
Scott. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-six-six.f, a resolution to approve the contract bid award for the 2023 Micro Servicing Project.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items F and G.
Scott.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero from the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council and Resolution I from Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-six-six.h, a resolution authorizing the approval of a partial repayment of an advanced general fund from Fund Number seventy-five twenty-one.
Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council, I move items H, I, J, and K. Second.
Scott. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero from Fairfield County Information Technology, Resolution 2023-six-six.l, a resolution to approve an access control installation agreement and bid award between Industrial Technical Services Incorporated and the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of additional access security controls in the Fairfield Center.
Summated. Second.
Question? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-six-six.m, a resolution regarding an amendment for a previously approved network placement and related services agreement between the Bear Foundation and Child Protective Services Department.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items M, N, O, P, Q, R, and S. Second.
Discussion? Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero for Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Corps, Resolution 2023-six-six.t, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Fund Number twenty-four oh eight Drug Port Program, Sum Fund Number eighty-two oh nine.
Summated. Second.
Discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2023-six-six.u, a resolution to approve the contract award for the Airport Sanitary Sewer Extension and Water Service, ARP Fiscal Recovery Fund, Number twenty-eight seventy-six.
Summated. Second.
Discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero on payment of fills, Resolution 2023-six-six.v, a resolution authorizing the approval and payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Summated. Second.
Discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June thirteenth at seven P M. at the Amerinda Clear Creek School District, Address thirty-three twenty-eight East Main Street in Amanda.
Thank you for that, Rochelle, and I just want to put an asterisk on that last announcement so that folks are clear that the commissioner will not be here at nine a.m. next Tuesday morning. Next Tuesday, our meeting is being moved early at seven P M. at the Amerinda Clear Creek High School. And apparently, we're supposed to go through door K when we enter, so we're learning.
It's just staged.
Yes. Is there any other new item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission at this time? Motion to adjourn. Second. I got a motion to adjourn at the second. All those are papers, and if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. The motion carries. The commission is adjourned. We do thank you all for coming.